Okay, I'm here. I'm tired, guys. I fell asleep. I want to just go back to sleep. Do you really need to ask me questions? Does nobody have mics today?
I do.
I do too. It's just nobody else was talking, so I just was like typing.
I'm not gonna type, so you're gonna have to respond audibly.
Alright.
Alright. What are your questions? For those of you who have lots of questions. What are we going over, the study guide?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
That's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, you guys got that covered, right? Answer every question on there. Do all the problem times. You're fine.
Well, since you're 30 minutes late, you gotta do it with us.
I concur with that statement.
Okay. Well, I'm not gonna tell you what the test questions are, cuz... That was yesterday. I don't remember them anymore. They're gone from my mind.
Oh, no.
And I'm not opening the file. Cuz if I open it, then I'll start telling you what's on the test, and I'm not gonna do that. Nope.
What? There's only five of us here. Come on.
And it's recorded for everybody else. So...
Can you come off of, like, off the top of your head, like, examples? For, like, kinda like to quiz us, like, if you were to draw and be like, which one?
No, so like, from a list of nucleophile files, choose the best nucleophile. You want some examples?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's a couple of ways this question could be asked. Could be like, um... Thinking, I'm thinking. You know, I don't like doing this in Word. Word stinks. Ooh, it's so messy. Maybe I should do it a little bit at a time. Let's start with these ones. Why? Anyways, okay. Nucleophile. Draw. Oh, I can use any color I want. Okay. What else? Something else that you should know the PKA of.
Dalton, is the test open yet?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. If you had to drag and drop these into the order of most nucleophilic to least nucleophilic, or in order of decreasing nucleophilicity, which one would be the most nucleophilic? Here, I'll start it for you. What's next? How do I decide?
You can look at substitution or lone pairs?
No.
No?
You can look at where it is on the periodic table. Is it negative or neutral? Aromatic, non-aromatic, sterekindrants, and the PKA of the conjugate acid.
Is it one of the O minus?
It is. So what's more nucleophilic, S minus or O minus?
Probably F?
Yes, because I didn't agree with you when you said O, right? As you go down a group, you become more nucleophilic. So, S minus is more nucleophilic than O minus. Where's, what did it, just like erase my other pair? My other dot? Okay. Alright, then we have O minus. Yeah, it's messy. Alright, what's next? Aromatic molecules or not aromatic molecules? Is it not aromatic? Correct. Aromaticity increases acidity, which decreases nucleophilicity. So not aromatic. Alright, so dihydrogen monoxide or dihydrogen sulfide?
Sulfide?
Yes.
Can you repeat the aromaticity?
Oh, I left one out. Aromaticity is more acidic, and so because things that are aromatic are more acidic, that means that they're gonna be less basic. Or less nucleophilic.
Will you go over the requirements for what makes something aromatic? I know it's like an odd number of pi bonds.
Odd number of pi bonds, planarity of all of the atoms in the conjugated network, continuous ring of pi network. All the atoms are sp2-hybridized that are part of the aromatic network. And an odd number of pairs. Okay, so going on with that theme, obviously, the benzene thiol is more nucleophilic than phenol. Okay, question. Why is ethoxide more nucleophilic than tert butoxide?
Because it's sterekindrants?
Yes. Now you just have to be able to do this on test. That's where the 80s music, like, comes into my brain and starts playing. Uh, okay. What kind of alkylhalide? Oh, can I move on now? Are we good with that one? Sorry, I get ahead of myself?
Yes, I think so. I'm good.
Recognize the characteristics. How do I know that the amide is more basic than the sulfide? These two. Why is the amide first?
Because it has a higher PKA?
Yes, because the conjugate acid, NH3, has a PKA of 35. And so the conjugate base is more nucleophilic. You know, this, this pen is not working very well, is it? So I have a question. If sulfidride has, if the ethyl thiol, ethane thiol has a PKA of 11, and ethanol has a PKA of 16, why is ethane thiol more nucleophilic than ethanol? Or the, why is this one with a lower PKA more nucleophilic than the ethoxide?
Does it have to do with the placement on the periodic table?
That is the reason that, yes, that I gave you guys. As you go lower on the periodic table, you are more nucleophilic, regardless of the fact that acidity increases as you go down a group, and that is because of polarizability, the distance of the electrons to the nucleus. Okay. So in this case, the position on the periodic table matters more than the PKA of the conjugate acid. But that is only true for atoms in the same group. So I can compare S to O, or I can compare S to other atoms in that group, but I can't compare it to atoms in adjacent groups. Okay? For that, if I'm gonna compare atoms in adjacent groups, like a group 5 to a group 6, then I'm gonna use PKA. Okay. Next question. What kind of alkylhalide will react readily by both SN1 and SN2 reactions? I can tell you what won't, what cannot do both SN1 and SN2. How about we start there? Primary and tertiary. Can not. Okay. So... Secondary, but would you say that secondary can react readily by both?
Yes.
I mean, it can react by both, but it's not all that speedy. Alright, so if it's not just a generic primary, tertiary, or a secondary, what else do we have to consider?
Aprodig and prodig solvent?
Uh, in this case, what we are looking for is an alilic or benzilic alkylhalide. And it can be a primary, secondary, or tertiary, alilic or benzilic. So make sure you understand what those positions are. So I think everybody gets that alilic is where X is adjacent to an sp2 carbon, so it's bonded to a carbon that is bonded to an sp2 carbon. So there's our alilic alkylhalide. This one would be a primary alilic alkylhalide. And it doesn't matter whether it's primary, secondary, tertiary, it can do SN1 or SN2. And then a benzilic is like alilic, but it has to be with a benzene ring. So then there's the benzilic position. This carbon.
So wait, the carbon that is starred, that's
that is where the substitutes, the new bond will form.
Oh.
In the top molecule, it's the alilic carbon, and in the bottom molecule, it's called the benzilic carbon.
Okay.
If the alkylhalide is directly connected to the carbon that's involved with the double bond, that would be vinyllic, right?
Yes.
And that wouldn't work for this reaction?
Correct. We can't do reactions on vinyllic carbons until we get to chapter 11. None of the reactions before chapter 11 can react with a vinyllic carbon. Except for when we eliminate two bromines from... So the only time that we can do that is when we have we start with Br, Br, and then we eliminate one to get Br on a double bond, and then we use and only a really strong base like amide can do that, and then we have to treat with amide again. And that will give us a triple bond in the end. But that's the only reaction up to chapter 11, where we have a reaction at a vinyllic carbon. And it's an elimination, not a substitution. That's actually on the test, but later.
Are you pushing Pearson homework back?
For which chapter? That?
11 is due on the 3rd. I think we will have, do you think we'll have time?
When is the 3rd Wednesday?
Yes.
Am I not almost done with the chapter? I thought I was almost done with the chapter.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we're only a few slides away, Dad. We're gonna finish it. You can do, turn it, totally turn it in on Wednesday. I only have four slides left. What are you talking about? We're not gonna have time. Of course we have time.
It's like every, every professor is pushing their stuff back, so it's all cramped up.
But I already pushed it back before we came to class this week. Because originally, it was due last week.
I'll get it done.
So you're just like, you missed it. I already moved it once. Well, let's face it, I've been moving things all, all year so far, so... Okay. So everybody gets the ideal alkylhalide to react by both SN1 and SN2 is the alilic or benzilic alkylhalide. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, decide whether a reaction will occur by SN1 and a first order, or SN2 and a second order reaction. And it might not even mention, the question may only ask, what order will the following reaction be, or what order will the... Yeah, and not mention SN1 or SN2, but the only way that you can decide if it's gonna be first order or second order is to decide, is it SN1 or SN2, or E1 or E2? So you have to relate. You have to know, the order relates to the name of the type of reaction. E1 and SN1 are first order, E2 and SN2 are second order. How can we identify an SN1 reaction?
Caro cation.
Well, what if it doesn't show you the cations? What if it just shows you starting material and products?
Let's see if there's any type of mokey material.
So the alkylhalide would have to be tertiary or secondary? And automatically, if it's tertiary, it has to be SN1, right? At the very least, the reaction does tell you that it's substitution. So if it's tertiary, you're gonna be like, that has to be SN1 for a substitution reaction. Okay? And this would also have a weak nucleophile. Usually neutral. Whereas, let's see, what color do I want? Green? When I think of SN2, the first thing that I'm gonna see is, do I have a primary alkylhalide? It could also be secondary, but if it's primary in a substitution reaction, it has to be SN2. And then it usually has a stronger nucleophile that has a formal charge. And then if you absolutely have to, then you might have to get into more tricky characteristics, like what kind of solvent is it in, and stuff like that. But I don't think I got that tricky on the test. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I did. But if it asks you for the substitution product, you guys do at least look at it and say, is it tertiary or is it primary? That's the first thing that you're gonna look for. What is the substitution of the alkylhalide? Because that can, that's the fastest way to start to get an idea of what direction it's going to go. Okay?
Can you explain, can you explain like that and compare? Can you explain, can you explain like that in comparison to elimination?
Elimination? Well, when we get to elimination on the study guide.
Okay.
I can tell you that primary alkylhalides prefer substitution over elimination. So the major product will be substitution. But tertiary alkylhalides undergo substitution and elimination equally. You can promote elimination using heat. And I don't think you can really make it favor substitution over elimination. Yeah. Depends on the strength of the, no, because for SN1, it doesn't matter how strong the nucleophile is. Yeah, it's, I know you can favor elimination using heat, but for a tertiary, it does both SN1 and E1 or, or E2 at the same amount. But luckily on the ACS exam and the MCAT and things like that, they usually specify what is the major substitution product, what is the major elimination product? And then out of 70 questions, they might ask you two questions where they just say, what is the major product without asking if it's going to be a substitution or elimination product? So that's not that bad. Two out of 70, you know, you can still make it A. Right?
Assuming we know everything else.
Assuming you know everything else. I usually find the ones that say, what is the major eliminate, what is the major product? Instead of asking, what is the major elimination product or what is the major substitution product? It's usually pretty clear whether it's going to be substitution or elimination. Usually. Like if they're talking, if they start with a secondary alkylhalide, then they almost always ask, what is the major substitution or what is the major elimination product? Because secondary can undergo E1, E2, SN1, SN2, it doesn't really matter. But when they say, what is the major product? Then they're doing something where they want you to recognize a characteristic of the reaction like, oh, the alkylhalide you're given is tertiary and your base is water. So what's likely to occur? Or your alkylhalide is primary, it must be substitution because primary alkylhalides favor substitution over elimination. And it that kind of, that kind of question. Where you already have a hint as to whether it's going to be SN1, SN2, E1 or E2 based on the characteristics of the substitution of the alkylhalide or the type of nucleophile used. Does that make sense? There's always some kind of a trick or a hint that they're giving you and it's up to you whether you actually recognize those tricks or hints. Are you guys good at recognizing those kinds of things? No? Yes? Maybe? Undecided?
It depends.
I do okay. Recognizing these things, but I've had lots and lots of practice. Neo is sleeping and I'm jealous, but he was at puppy daycare all day, so he got to play outside all day.
Oh.
Okay. You, you guys should thank your, your TA because she called me and said, why aren't you in the study session? And I was like, um.
It's because I told her you weren't here.
Okay. Decide whether a reaction will occur by SN1 and be for, oh, I already did that. Okay. All right. So a related question. What does not affect the rate of SN2 reaction? Or what, wait, I think that I wrote this wrong. What does not affect the rates? SN2. What does affect the rate? I hate when you have like autocorrect. Changing my words. What does affect the rate of an SN2? But not the rate of an SN1 reaction? Yes. That's what it should say. What does affect the rate of SN2, but not the rate of SN1? Does anybody know?
The concentration of the nucleophile.
Exactly. See, you don't even need me to be here in the study session. You're fine. Okay, silly pen. Okay. Who is that noise? Solve the multi-step reaction. Meaning multiple reagent steps. Like when you're given a reaction arrow. And it says, one, two, three, four. That kind of thing. Um. So you're given a reactant. And they want another product. And they're all reactions that we've covered at some point, either in OChem1 or OChem2. You need to remember the reagents for hydroboration oxidation. So there's one hint. You need to think about when a substance is going to behave as a Bronsted and Lowry base. Why do I say a Bronsted and Lowry base? What does a Bronsted and Lowry base do?
Donate and give proton.
Bronsted and Lowry base is a proton acceptor. So it takes a proton. Okay? So knowing hydroboration oxidation reaction. Recognizing a Bronsted and Lowry base and, and knowing how it will react with functional groups like alcohols and amines or something with an acidic proton. And then be able to go through reactions of nucleophiles with alkylhalides. And, and that's my only hints. I'll, you can write down the reagents for hydroboration oxidation if you want. What are they?
Okay, BH3, then THF. And HO minus and peroxide. And water.
Yeah. So is that maybe two out of my four arrows?
So.
Possibly.
Possibly.
Okay. What product does it make?
An alkoxide?
No, no, no. What does hydroboration oxidation make?
An alcohol.
An alcohol. What kind of alcohol?
A primary?
A less substituted.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Anti-mark alcohol. Do I need to write out the entire anti-markovnikov? Or everybody just thinks of it as anti-mark now?
I think of the whole thing, man, that, that makes sense.
How many people do you think remembered the study session or already came to the study session and left because I wasn't there?
Probably a lot.
Some of us were on since seven and not too many people joined. I mean, basically this is all.
Okay. Were you guys going through the review without me?
No, I was working on a lab report.
When is that? Do what? Monday?
Yes, both of them. At least for Monday lab. Actually, yeah, the two lab reports, the mini lab.
Like it's kind of mean for me to make them both do, right? But I figured you'd rather have to do it once than for me to make them do one week at a time and have you have an assignment due during spring break.
Hmm, yeah. This is true.
So they both do it at the same time. Okay. And then you guys can do acid-base reactions, Bronsted and Lowry base with a weak acid. You've been doing that since Gen Chem. And then nucleophiles with alkylhalides, I'm not worried about that. You got that, right? Basically, the whole point of this question is just to be like, oh, hey, remember that stuff from OChem1? Guess what? It's still here. Now take something from OChem1 and apply it with something from OChem2. Yay.
So do we have to draw like the whole mechanism for that problem, basically?
It's a multiple choice problem that.
Oh.
Hey.
That makes it a little better.
So we just have to know that if it has a BH3 mechanism.
You have to pick the product. You have to choose the correct product.
Yeah, so a primary alcohol, I'll just look for that.
No doubt. That's what happens when you get to step two. After step two, you have an alcohol. I'm not, then you have to figure out what happens with the reagents in step three. What does step three make? Then you have to figure out, okay, after I have step three and I give, and I put step four in, what is step four due to the product of step three? What is my final product?
Oh.
Yeah. Multi-step reaction. See, solve a multi-step reaction.
This sucks.
Yes.
You should, you should do something like how, okay, so Dr. Y, he's giving us three tests total, I think, and he's dropping the lowest one.
No.
I mean, you should.
No.
I don't drop tests. What? No.
It's not physics.
I don't round, I don't drop tests. Hey, does anybody know that, you guys remember highway cleanup? It's coming up.
When's it happen?
On the sixth, not this weekend, but the next weekend. And we will again provide Taco Cabana breakfast.
I will do everything to try and make it.
What can I do? Can I just?
If you cannot walk and do that pickup, you can ride in the truck and hand out water.
Ooh.
I hope it doesn't rain that day.
But then you'll be stuck with me the whole time.
Wait. I don't get stuck with you, you get stuck with me.
And Neo, and Neo, so I hope you're not allergic to dogs.
We went over to Dr. Mills' house. You get stuck with me.
I don't know, I can be pretty annoying too, Dad.
We'll see.
We're gonna try to out annoy each other. Okay. Identify correctly portrayed step of SN2 reaction mechanism. Which answer choice has the correct electron flow arrows? Well, you guys know the general mechanism for SN2, right? What is it?
Oh, one step, two arrows? Three, right? Three.
Hmm, let's just do RX. And then we have a nucleophile. Right? Isn't that the general SN2 mechanism? Here, maybe we should be more specific. How can I get more specific? Backside attack. To kick off X, right?
And inversion.
Yeah, but you don't have to show inversion.
Okay.
The mechanism, you just see the arrows. Inversion occurs in the transition state. We don't show transition states.
Okay.
This specifically asks us, what does the transition state look like? But so far, I've never seen a question on mastering where they make you draw the transition state. Did they make you draw the transition state ever? I don't think so.
I don't think, yeah, no. I don't think so.
This makes me so sad because the test that I gave before This makes me so sad because the test that I gave before, where we were in person, I missed that. I missed that because it's so much more difficult answering that kind of a test. Oh, well, I guess it's fine. This one has a lot of writing.
Wait, the test?
No.
Oh.
This set for the study guide has a lot of writing. There's a lot of writing on this part of these three, these three topics on the study guide.
My car alarm's going off. I have to turn it off real quick. I'll be back.
Your car alarm's going off. Stop accidentally pushing the key fob.
I'm not even touching it.
Oh, well.
Uh, crazy. Okay, I'll be back.
Okay. All right. Given an alkylhalide reactant and a sodium salt of the nucleophile, you will need to draw out the sodium salt to understand the nucleophile and to see where the new bond will form. Okay, then this right here belongs with that, actually. Enter. Yes. So you're given an alkylhalide and a sodium salt of the nucleophile. You have to recognize what the sodium salt is, that it's the sodium salt of the nucleophile, and you have to draw out the nucleophile. So mastering and the ACS exam and stuff like that, they love to write nucleophiles as sodium salts like this. Or like sodium methoxide, where they don't have to put a negative charge. But you're supposed to understand that if sodium, the spectator ion goes away, then it's got a negative charge. And you, the reason that I say you have to draw out the sodium salt is how are you gonna figure out what the final product looks like if you don't draw it out? I mean, do you guys, can you look at this and say, oh, that's a carb oxalate ion? That's gonna make an ester? Off the top of your head?
Nope.
Because I can, but you're not there yet. So you need to be able to draw this out. Because once you draw it out, once you say O minus, double bond O, CH2CH3, and you have RX, then you're like, oh, that's gonna make, ta-da, right? Then it becomes straightforward and you understand the final answer. But until you draw it out, you're just like, what the heck? Am I right?
Yep.
And the second you draw it out, you're like, oh, that's so obvious. That's gonna happen. That negative oxygen is gonna replace that X. And then that's the final product. You're done. Okay. Cool. Right? Just like that. Okay, next. So just be able to draw these things and recognize what's happening in a problem. Don't just look at it and say, I have no idea and go maudlin and panic. Draw it out. Okay?
All right.
Okay. Given the product of elimination reaction or a substitution reaction and the nucleophile of the reaction, draw the alkylhalide and the nucleophile that reacted to create the given substitution or elimination product. So basically, you are told the product. And they ask you what are the reactants?
Wait, would this one be multiple choice?
Nope.
Okay.
As it specifically says.
Oh, yeah, right.
Draw.
Got it. Okay.
It's so fun. So nice. I love drawing problems.
Can you give us an example? So we can practice.
I have to think of one. So it says that they tell you what the nucleophile is. So you're given the product and the nucleophile given. So if I'm given the product to the nucleophile, then I can say, your nucleophile is CN minus and your product is what is the reactant? What alkylhalide will produce this product? Anybody?
A secondary? A secondary alkylhalide?
Yeah, just, you know, replace the position with the nucleophile with an X, right?
Yes.
Okay. You were so quiet. You had me worried.
I'm processing. Is, well, do they require, okay, so do they have an X option or do we have to pick a specific? Oh, wait, they'll probably give us the, never mind.
They don't care what halogen you use.
Oh, okay.
As long as you don't try fluorine, because fluorine is a bad leaving group.
Right.
And you should know, you should know better than he's a bad leaving group.
So what happened in here if it was fluorine?
No reaction. Nothing would happen. You wouldn't make the product that.
I thought on one of the thing that whenever you have fluorine, it would just add, um, it on the other side, the less substituted one. Which one is that?
Hmm.
So I think I remember in class, like at one point, um, if you have fluorine.
There was something about fluorine, but I think it was for an elimination. Making the antizetase of alkene.
Okay.
Not for a substitution. I could be wrong about that, but I'm pretty sure. Okay. So that is an example of a substitution. And then I have a note. In an elimination, uh, reaction, be sure that you understand which hydrogen will most likely be taken away by the nucleophile. And remembering that if you have a small nucleophile, the hydrogen from the more substituted carbon is taken and if you have a bulky nucleophile, the hydrogen from the last substituted carbon is taken. So insert. So for example, if my nucleophile is methoxide and my product is which carbon had the halogen? That one or that one? Does it matter?
Well, one is more substituted, so yes.
Are you sure? Does it really matter? Does it, does it, does it, does it, does it? Now I'm making you doubt yourself, right? So couldn't I have this one or this one? Because my options are remove a hydrogen from a secondary carbon or a primary carbon or remove a hydrogen from a tertiary carbon or a primary carbon. So no matter what, I still have more substituted hydrogen to remove. When, but both of these alkene, both of these alkylhalides will create the same alkene. So there's a little bit more ambiguity when you're dealing with elimination. You like it when things are ambiguous, right?
Um, how can the, uh, primary hydrogen make the product that we have on the right?
It can't. That's the whole point. But my, my hint said, make sure you understand which hydrogen is the most likely to be taken away. So when you propose your alkylhalide, you have to think it through and say, yes, this hydrogen would be taken, not that one. Yes, this hydrogen would be taken and not that one. And that would give us this product. So this is a valid answer.
Oh, so both of them are valid?
Both of these are valid, provided that the given hydrogen is abstracted. So if I have this product, then, um, these would be possible reactants. And for the most part, um, from what I have seen on Mastering, they are really good about making sure the problem will accept both correct answers. I checked. Okay, so that's those two examples. I'm going to move forward with the next. Okay, three, next three. Let's do three. Am I even done with one page yet? Not really. It's okay. It's fine. We had fun in lab today. It was great. And we got out early, unlike every other day this week. Not that I compare my, my labs. Of course, I don't compare my labs.
Hmm, yeah, you do.
Okay. Um, what reagents are required? I might have to start recording pre-lab and making Monday class watch pre-lab ahead of time, too. Just so they have more time in lab. It's kind of not fair that I make them come to a live pre-lab. Right?
Nah, I think it's fine.
Okay. Aren't you in Friday lab, Caleb? What reagents are required to turn an alkene into an alkine? Oh, yeah, I already, I already, uh, talked about this earlier. How can we turn an alkene into an alkine? We talked about this in chapter nine. And I said that this is the only way. And also I said, you need a strong base such as sodium amide to cause a double elimination to generate two pi bonds. So for example, a double elimination. What would I be eliminating? They'd put sodium amide and then amide would take a proton from the more substituted carbon. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna take. If I take this proton, for example, then I create my first pi bond. And again, this is in your book for chapter nine. I think it's in the slides, too. Why is this is so weird? Okay, yes. So I missed a thing. It's gonna go away. Uh huh. But I drew these on the wrong side because it has to be anti-elimination. So this H is up there, X is down there. And then X goes away. So I have H and X remaining. Then I'm going from an alkene to an alkine. I have to treat with the only base that your book said was strong enough to do this to eliminate a hydrogen from a vinyl carbon was sodium amide. All right, that's from chapter nine. Remember, we haven't done chapter 11 for this test, so. In chapter 11, we learn about a whole bunch of things can, that can, you know, react with a vinyl carbon. But in chapter nine, the only thing that can react with the vinyl carbon is amide. Proton, pi electrons go down, kick off the halogen. And then we have our alkine. With our one, two, three, four carbons. So on the test, you're going to be asked to pick the reagents to turn an alkyne into an alkine.
So a show your mechanism?
No. Multiple choice. Choose the reagents.
So there's only one answer that is?
No doubt. This is my explaining how it happens, okay? So you have, you start with an alkyne. And then it says, make this alkyne an alkine. And in order to do that, you would have to treat with, first, you have to make the di-halide from the alkyne. How do I make a vicinal di-halide from an alkyne? This is from chapter six. Okay, so we have.
Wouldn't it be F squared to like halogen two, so like Br2?
Yes, Br2 and anhydrous solvent. Exactly, Caleb. So we would have, if we're starting with an alkyne, then in order to make the molecule with two Xs, I would need X2, Cl2 or Br2 in CCl4. And so you would have answer choices like A is this, and B is this, and C is this, and D is this. And then the reagents, they would have different reagents and the options for AB and D, ABC and D. But you would need to pick a reagent option where you have the reagents to create the di-halide and to remove protons from an alkyne, which there's only one base that they talked about in the chapter that could remove a proton from a vinyl carbon. Basically, I'm telling you the answer to one of the questions.
I got it now. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Given a base or nucleophile, because bases are nucleophiles, and the corresponding, and a corresponding alkylhalide, decide if the product will be substitution or elimination. And then by evaluating substitution of the alkylhalide and evaluating substitution. So substitution of the alkylhalide, I'm, that means primary, oh. Why is my computer not wanting to write? Substitution, primary, secondary, tertiary alkylhalide. So look at the substitution of the alkylhalide and evaluate the substitution, primary, secondary, or tertiary nucleophile and the strength of the nucleophile. And the reason that we evaluate the substitution of the nucleophile is because steric hindrance decreases nucleophilicity. So a hysterically hindered nucleophile undergoes less substitution and more elimination.
Could you repeat that one more time? The elimination.
A hysterically hindered nucleophile will not perform substitution. It will favor elimination. So I, the way that I expressed that was to say, decreased substitution, increased elimination. Okay, so there's going to be a problem on the exam where you have to decide if it's a substitution or elimination problem. And you're going to decide whether it's substitution or elimination by looking at the alkylhalide. And, um, well, if it's primary, you're going to be like, oh, it has to be substitution automatically. The alkylhalide is primary, the major product is substitution. If it's not primary, then looking at the alkylhalide can at least help you think about, is it going to be SN1 or SN2? Or can it be SN1 or SN2? Not necessarily help you decide absolutely, okay? Then you have to go and look at the base. And the substitution of the base can help you decide if it's going to be, like, whether the base is primary, secondary, or tertiary can help you decide if it's going to be elimination or substitution. Because a tertiary base almost always is an elimination. But also the strength of the base can help you decide on whether it's substitution or elimination because of, if you have a tertiary alkylhalide and a good base, then that usually favors elimination. Okay, but if you have a tertiary alkylhalide and you have a weak base like water, then that is going to favor substitution. Okay. So the characteristics of the reaction can help you evaluate whether you're going to have a substitution or elimination product. And just to note, primary are X favor substitution regardless of base. Even if your nucleophile hysterically hindered, if you have a primary alkylhalide, substitution is possible. Okay. I need to plug in my computer or it's going to kick us all out of Zoom. Maybe I should let it die, then I can go to bed.
Need you.
Yeah, okay. Neo has decided he's going to get up and eat dinner. My puppy. Over the back of the couch. Neo. Want to nap? Don't break the bowls. Okay. All right. Given a list of bases, decide which base will most effectively produce the least substituted alkyne, also known as the anty zetase product. Yes, we talked about this a lot in class. We had a table with, okay, where's chapter nine? Chapter nine. It's open chapter nine. Yeah. No, I'm not getting up right now. I just sat down. Chapter nine on slide 61. Steric properties of bases affect product substitution. The least stable alkyne is favored with the bulkiest base, the most hysterically hindered base. Woo. Now, can I just like? There you go. The answer to this part, choose the bulkiest, most hysterically hindered base. Because the less stable alkyne is the anty zetase product. Good. Moving on. As long as there are no objections. Three more. Why did I give him a doggy doorbell again? Oh, I know why. Because I didn't want him potty in the house anymore. But still. It gets annoying.
Oh, so you're training him so that you can let him out when he rings it?
Well, no, we, within two weeks, we had him trained to use this thing, but he still uses it. He will not bark to go outside. The only way he will let me know he needs to go outside and go to the bathroom is to ring the doorbell. But he rings the doorbell anytime he wants to go out, even if it's just to play around or dig holes in the yard. Or just get me to get off the computer. Or play with a toy. So I'll get up, he'll ring the doorbell. I'll get up to go let him out. And he'll walk away from the door and pick up a toy and be like, start wagging his tail. Kidding, I want to play. I don't want to go outside. Yeah. My puppy tends to do that, too. He's like, I need to go so badly. Oh, wait, never mind. I want to play. All right, given a list of bases, which base will produce the more substituted alkyne or the zetase alkyne? So if you're looking for the zetase alkyne, looking for the more stable alkyne, you need a base that is not bulky, not hysterically hindered, does have a formal charge. Okay? So. You can write that down if you want. Non-sterically hindered formal charge. I was teaching non-majors how to draw Lewis structures today. I think I made them want to cry. And then I started talking about Vesper.
Oh. That's hard on not, non-majors. That's hard.
Well, I mean, it was hard on you guys when you first learned it. And you are majors. Yes. We learned it in high school, and I was fine after that. I didn't know why it was such a big deal in college. I already knew it. I didn't understand why nobody else could like, draw them already, or know the the structures already. We learned tetrahedral and all that stuff in high school. And then everybody else is like, I haven't learned this yet, what are you talking about? And I was like, what? High school level, what are you talking? Apparently, that was not high school level. That's what happens when your chem... High school chemistry professor has a doctorate. Be able to find the product of an alcohol reaction with HBR in heat, and know whether or when an arrangement is possible through carbocation shift. So, you know you are going to have at least one problem on the test, where you have an alcohol reacting with HBR in heat, and there's going to be a carbocation shift. There's your hint. So you have to just... And you'll be looking at the prod... The possible products, like, here's the reaction. Your answer choices are A, B, C, and D, these are the possible products. You have to choose the product that is going to give you the most stable product, and it could be that it is one that only happens after a carbocation shift. Like, um, if I had this reagent reacting with HBR in heat, and I promise you, this is not the one on the test, because I'm not that nice, then the final product would actually be like this. What happened? The OH moved from here to here, why? Because I had a hydride shift of my intermediate carbocation. So this hydride moves over there, and then the tertiary carbon becomes the cation, and the bromide bonds to the tertiary carbon. And a shift can occur whenever you have the alcohol adjacent to a more substituted carbon. This is chapter 10. Material. So after that problem, everything else is chapter 10. I guess that kind of means we're halfway through the review. Except I think I put more questions from chapter 10 than chapter nine on the test. By like, one question or two questions. Okay. You guys are so quiet. It makes me want to be like, okay, we're done.
No, we're still here.
Keep going.
I've just been so wrong so many times, I'm scared of like, just like, saying the wrong thing, and it's like...
But if you say the wrong thing, then I... All I do is just like, correct you. It's still feedback for me.
So like, by the way, you're hearing our answer on these questions, you can already guess our test results. Hopefully, that's not the case.
More of you after I give you... After I correct your thinking, then I can be like, they should get this right on the test now.
So can you explain that HBR heat one more time? So if the OH group leaves and BR comes in?
So remember, HBR in heat is sort of an acid catalyzed replacement of the hydroxide ion. Do you want me to draw the mechanism?
Can you say that again?
Do you want me to draw the mechanism? So we have HBR in heat with a secondary alcohol. If the secondary alcohol is next to a more substituted carbon, it will undergo an SN1 reaction. Yeah, okay, Neo, just give me a minute. So, the alcohol becomes protonated, because an alcohol is a bad leaving group. So you protonate the alcohol to make it a better leaving group. And then, you have water, which is a good leaving group. And because water is next to a more substituted carbon, it will simply fall off, making a semi-stable secondary carbocation. Then, because the secondary carbocation is next to a more substituted carbon, you will have a hydride shift. You can move a hydrogen or a methyl group, but you cannot move something larger than a methyl group. So in this case... But you're going to move the smallest thing that you have, so we have a hydride. H is smaller than a methyl group, so we're just going to move the hydride. Now, we will have our carbocation at this position. We have added hydrogen over here, so that this is a CH2 group. And then, finally, the bromide that we kicked off earlier comes in and bonds the positive carbon to give the major product. That's how I would explain what's happening. But, this is a multiple choice question. So, really, you're giving the alcohol, and you're told that it's an HBR in heat, and then you have it... Product choices A, B, C, D, and you have to correct... Choose the correct product. So just be thinking about how you will process that question. You know that the alcohol group is going to be replaced with bromine, but you have to think about whether or not the bromine is going to be on the same carbon as the alcohol, or is it going to be on another carbon because of a cation shift? And the only time a cation shift will occur is if the alcohol group is next to a more substituted carbon. Because the alcohol group is the first carbon that has a positive charge, and it's the carbocation where you have a shift. So if the alcohol group is next, is like, a secondary carbon next to a tertiary carbon, or a secondary carbon next to a quaternary carbon, then you can definitely have a cation shift, and you should be looking for a product that shows the bromine on a different carbon than the alcohol group. But you have to make sure that it's simply moving the bromine to the more substituted carbon, and moving a hydrogen or a methyl group to that less substituted carbon. All right, I'm gonna have to let this puppy outside. She's about to ask again. Neo, you want to go outside? There goes all my soda cans.
Oh.
My soda can's here. Wow, it is really dark outside tonight. Really, really dark. My computer fan is going crazy. It's very loud right now. And my knee hurts. Why does my knee hurt? What did I do to my knee? Kidding, maybe it's just old age, I'm too old. No, I'm just kidding. Probably tweaked it. The, um... I... My truck is pretty high off the ground, and I can't use the step-up rail right now, because I'm pretty sure the bolt that attaches it to the front is gone.
Oh. That's not good.
I need to replace that, and I'm trying to... I'm like, avoiding putting weight on it. So...
Just have to do it really fast.
Made me tweak my knee, trying to step up. My truck is basically like a good two and a half feet off the ground. So it's a bit... It's a big step up. All right. Know all the reagents that can convert an alcohol to an alkyl chloride, so that you can pick one from a list. Basically, you're told that this alcohol is turned into this alkyl chloride, which of the following reagents can accomplish this transformation? Yeah. It's great, I like that question, it's a good question. How can we turn an alcohol into an alkyl chloride? What about... Okay, so, an alcohol can be turned into RX if X is chlorine, bromine, or iodine, using the acid and heat, bromine being the most reactive. An alcohol can be turned into an alkyl chloride using PCL and puridine, PCL3 and puridine, and using thionyl chloride and puridine. So that's at least three reagents that can turn an alcohol into an alkyl chloride. And you guys will have to go through the PowerPoint and see if there are any more. I'm not going to do it for you.
Can I see the last slide again?
This one? Alcohol plus HX, where X is CL, BR, or I. I could do it like this, it could be like... New. I'll do it if it's easy. I just don't want to have to put in a bunch of work. This one. I wouldn't bother putting this in the PowerPoint, but I might post this PowerPoint. Maybe. Maybe. Do you guys ever use the snipping tool?
Never. I use it.
I haven't used it in a while. I've used it before.
This one. And, there might be something else in the slides, but I'm not going to go look for it. You guys can look for it. But I know for sure these three can create... Convert an alcohol to an alkyl chloride. Next question. What am I doing with that? I want the Word documents. Yeah, it kind of felt like that was going to happen. Totally not going to redraw this, so... Okay. Recognize alkyl sulfonyl chlorides and know how they react with alcohols. Be able to identify the product of an alcohol reacting with an alkyl sulfonyl chloride. And so, examples from the class alkyl sulfonyl chlorides, ones that we used in, uh... In class, tosyl chloride, also known as peretoleuene sulfonyl chloride, and methane sulfonyl chloride. So how do these two molecules react with an alcohol? So if I have ROH plus tosyl chloride, or I could draw it out. Or I could draw it out. And the test does not use tosyl chloride. It uses a different sulfanil chloride. So you just have to recognize that. It doesn't have to be one of these two. It just needs to be a sulfanil, an alkyl sulfanil chloride reacting with an alcohol. But the product of that. Would be what? What gets replaced? The oxygen? Or? Well, not the oxygen. The hydrogen on the alcohol is replaced with the sulfanil chloride group, basically. Why am I drawing this with my mouse instead of just with my finger? It's just not the same. Why aren't you erasing? Okay, so this is the product. So basically, you need to be able to pick the product of a reaction like this.
So the halide gets kicked off as well as the hydrogen?
The hydrogen from the alcohol and the halide from the alkyl sulfanil chloride.
Okay.
This is from slide. There. Oh no, that's not the same one. Okay, here. Slide sixteen and alcohol plus an al, a sulfanil chloride. And our group, so I call it alkyl sulfanil chloride. The oxygen will react with, by bonding to the sulfur. Chlorine gets kicked off. The proton is taken away by puridine. And you have the sulfonate ester where your purple is the alcohol group that bonded to sulfur. And your sulfonate compound that was already there.
So what is the leaving group now?
On what part?
The sulfonate ester.
The, uh, the bond between the oxygen and the sulfur. This, the single bond to oxygen from sulfur will break. When we use that in a reaction. So. We can replace the sulfanil group with a nucleophile. Okay. And, um, the, actually, the carbon oxygen bond is what breaks. When we do that. So it leaves as a sulfonate ion with SO three minus.
So what makes someone decide to do this instead of just protonate the alcohol?
This happens faster. Takes less time. It occurs more efficiently. It occurs with a higher yield of the product. You can put more groups on than you can. By just putting on a halide. Because of the aromaticity, it's more stable than an alkyl halide. There's a lot of different reasons why you're gonna pick making a sulfonate molecule versus making an, a halide. And as you saw today, working with halides can be pretty dangerous. Sometimes working with sulfonate is less dangerous. Okay, I'm getting tired again. Let's move to the next question. Recognize the reactant and reagents. For acid catalyzed dehydration of an alcohol and be able to identify the product. Remember, does this reaction produce zetasevalkine or antizetasevalke? What are the reagents for acid catalyzed dehydration? Anybody?
H two SO four.
Yes. H two SO four. Maybe it's after, okay. Here we go. Acid catalyzed dehydration, slide twenty-three. An alcohol plus H two SO four in heat will result in an alkene and water. It is an elimination reaction. And whether it is. If you want elimination or an E two elimination is dependent on the substitution of the alcohol. But the reagents are H two SO four in heat. And that will give us an alkene. And will it give us the zetasevalke or the antizetasevalke? It will give us, this is not asterically hindered base. These acid conditions will always produce the zetasevalke in major, as the major product. So choose the more substituted alkene as your final product. Example, if I have an alcohol like this. Then I can remove a proton here. Or here, under acid catalyzed conditions and. Because it favors a zetasev product. It is going to produce the alkene. That removes a proton from the more substituted carbon, resulting in the more substituted alkene. Okay? My goodness. Okay. Three more. Recognize base catalyzed ring opening of an epoxy. So basically. As long as you know you have an epoxy. I mean, if you're given. A problem like. You know, if you're given an epoxy and a formally charged base. I would expect you to know that that is base catalyzed ring opening. So, um, I just accidentally erased that in the. Because this is formally charged base, it must be base catalyzed. So that's how you're gonna recognize base catalyzed ring opening. And be able to draw the product of that reaction. Then you also have to recognize acid catalyzed ring opening. So. They're given an epoxy. And the reaction arrow has. HCl on it. Well, I mean, that's acid, so must be acid catalyzed. You guys got that, right? That's not gonna be an issue?
I got it.
I feel like acid catalyzed ring opening and base catalyzed ring opening are some of the. Least confusing reactions of chapter ten. Does anybody else agree with me?
I do. Me too.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Know the reagents for transforming an alcohol into an alkyl bromide. So you had to know an alkyl chloride. You also have to know an alkyl bromide. So it would be this one. Right, can, we can make an alcohol into an alkyl bromide with this reagent. Or with. No, where is it? With PBR three. I feel like there's more than that, but I'm not gonna go find it for you. Sad day. I could be wrong. Maybe there isn't more than that, but I don't remember. Does anybody else remember? Dot, dot, dot.
About what again?
The reagents to transform an alcohol into an alkyl bromide. I know you can use HBR or PBR three. Is there something else that we can use? I don't think so from the chapter. It's possible that thionyl bromide would work just like thionyl chloride works. But your book does not mention it. Neo? Neo? See, he rang the doorbell and then he ran away. Probably over digging. Yep, he's digging. Walking outside now. Neo? Get in the house. Come on, stop digging in the yard, inside. No, get in the house, inside. Does he pop up even with the waterfall background when I turn the camera on him?
No.
No, oh, sorry. You missed the cuteness. He's, he's getting pretty big. He's really getting pretty big. He's thinking about just how tall he's getting and then how broad, how big his rib cage is getting. Valerie's like, no, he can't jump on me. He's taller than me now. And I was like, no, but he's so gentle when he jumps up. It's fine. And she said, no. Poor puppy, poor puppy.
Just puppy hugs.
Oh, I'm not done with that question, am I? I just addressed the first part of it. Know the reagents for transforming an alkyl, an alcohol into an alkyl bromide. Oh, so this is a multi-step reaction. Then determine when SN two inversion will occur. So. I'm going to interpret this for you. I'm interpreting the study guide. It looks like you have a reaction where first. You start with an alcohol and then they give you a reagent that turns it into an alkyl bromide. After you have the alkyl bromide, they give you some type of reagent. That is going to react by SN two with the alkyl bromide. And so you have to recognize an SN two reaction of an alkyl bromide. And then based on your recognition, choose the correct product. Of the alkyl bromide reacting with the nucleophile. That has the correct stereo chemistry in the product. That's a good question. It's like, um, let's go to the PowerPoint, okay? So basically, it is like the question where. We were talking about this slide, slide twenty-one. So you have an alcohol, you have a reagent that turns it into an alkyl bromide. And then you have like a substitution or elimination reagent. And they wanna know. Can you, given a series of steps, give the product? give the product with the correct stereochemistry? Sometimes I just want to like copy paste slides from the PowerPoint and be like, this is your study guide. I don't know what's better, me writing out a study guide like this, or if I copy pasted slides from the PowerPoint?
I feel like this way is better.
Okay. All right, let's see. Next. Let's just do that. Yes. The Hoffman elimination reaction. All right. So you remember in chapter six, we learned that a peroxide acid will produce in reaction with an alkene will produce an epoxy, okay? And so you have to recognize what a peroxide acid formula will look like because this question on the test, it doesn't say MCPVA plus an alkene. It gives you the formula of a peroxide acid. And so you're looking for CO3H and recognizing that that is going to produce an epoxy from an alkene. And then you have to take the epoxy and take it and on step two, you either have acid catalyzed epoxy ring opening or base catalyzed epoxy re. And you're being, you're having to draw the product of the reaction. Straightforward? Question? No questions? Good?
Yeah.
All right, next. Given the reaction with a quaternary ammonium hydroxide in heat, you have to recognize that a quaternary ammonium hydroxide in heat is the Hoffman elimination reaction, which results in the antizetase of alkene. It takes a proton from the least substituted beta carbon. So I have two beta carbons. One is primary and one is secondary. And the Hoffman elimination always takes a proton from the primary or the less substituted carbon and then breaks the bond to nitrogen at that position. There's one more beta carbon, actually. This one, but that one is tertiary. So it's definitely not that one. Because I only break one of the bonds to nitrogen in the case of a cyclic ammonium ion, the final product will be an amine. Right? So I tried to write it out. Recall the Hoffman elimination abstracts proton from the least substituted carbon adjacent to the carbon bonded to the amine. So the red C or the highlighted Cs in pink. And when the pi bond forms between the carbon and the adjacent to the carbon bonded to nitrogen and the carbon bonded to nitrogen, the carbon bond to nitrogen breaks. So we get this pi bond forms and that bond broke the CN bond. So be able to draw the product of that reaction. In this case, the way that I like to do it is because you're in mastering, I'll count how many carbons are in my chain. Or atoms even, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and then nitrogen is atom 8, methyl is atom 9. And then I will make a note that there's an extra N methyl group and there's an ethyl group at carbon 6. And I don't actually write this down on my test. I just keep, I, I tell this to myself in my brain so that I won't forget to draw it in mastering. So then in mastering, I'll pick the one where you can just drag it over until I have nine atoms. 1, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 9. And then atom 8 is a nitrogen, so you've got to replace the carbon with a nitrogen. Then the nitrogen has another methyl group. I have to add a methyl there. And then on carbon 6, I have to add an ethyl group, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And so this Hoffman amine, or this ammonium ion will produce this. Remember, it's supposed to be an alkene, so I have to put in that pi bond between carbon 1 and 2. So I have pi bond here and then an ethyl group at carbon 6 and two methyl groups on the nitrogen. We are consistent.
Can you draw the arrow?
You mean like the mechanism?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to draw in the hydrogen over here. Right, so then the hydroxide ion comes and takes that hydrogen. This goes down and forms a pi bond right there. And then this bond breaks and goes on to the nitrogen as a lone pair.
Gotcha, thank you.
I don't think I put any mechanisms on this test. Oh, no.
Yay.
I should have put a mechanism question on the test. It's just proof that I was very tired when I was writing it. Darn it.
Are there any short answer questions?
Yes. Oh. There are two. Short answer essay questions.
Short answer essay questions, what?
Yes. Yes. You'll be fine. They're not mean questions. They're easy questions. And there I go, using the word easy again, which is supposed to be taboo. Professors aren't supposed to use the term easy. Whatever. It's easy.
Okay.
Elizabeth is like, sure it is.
Is it?
I totally trust you, Dr. Millsap. Not.
Well, I'm not sure what to expect with easy. Easy could be like, well, it depends, again.
I feel confident that the students will not struggle to correctly answer the short answer questions. I feel like we'll have at least 97% correct, if not 100% correct on the short answer. And if we don't, then you will definitely hear about it once I look at the test. I will probably bring it up in class like, what, what, why? I don't understand.
Would they be more logical questions or concept?
Both.
Okay.
I mean,
Yeah, true.
We covered the concept and we talked about the logic behind the concept, so. I mean, I'm not asking you to just pull something out of a hat that we didn't talk about the concept. Okay.
Right.
What is the product of the reaction of an alcohol, just inserting of because it doesn't make sense without that, or of a thiol with a Bronsted and Lowry base? Answer: removal of the most acidic proton, the OH or SH proton. Okay. How would the product formed react with an alkyl haline? What would be the final product? So basically, you have a thiol or an alcohol plus a Bronsted and Lowry base, which removes the proton. So you have a sulfide or an alkoxide ion. And how do those react with RX? Doesn't it just substitute and replace the X? Yes, the product would be what?
Well, it depends on what, if it's RS, HR, or OH.
It would either be a thiyoether or an ether, right? It's going to produce either a thiyoether or an ether. Depending on which of those two reactants I have. Okay. And then I want you to remember on the test, your mastering chemistry on one of the exam problems uses the abbreviation pH for a group. And you have to remember that pH is a benzene ring. So for example, phenyl, phenylmethyl ester is this molecule with a benzene ring bonded to, carbon bonded to methyl. Good? Remember, pH is a benzene ring. And the reason that you have to know that pH is a benzene ring is because on the problem where they use the abbreviation pH, they want you to draw the product. Congratulations. So if you know that pH stands for benzene, you will not draw the product correctly. All right. Draw the product of the reaction of a primary alcohol with sodium dichromate in sulfuric acid. Ah, the oxidation reactions. A primary alcohol will react with chromic acid in what way? It will turn it into a carboxylic acid. So that you have R C double bond OH. We're getting very close to the end now. Feel like the oxidation reactions were one of the last things I put on the test. I was almost ready to stop giving the test and I was like, I don't have any oxidation reactions in this test bank. What? How can you not test over oxidation reactions? Let me go find some.
Got to have them.
Yes, the ACS test likes oxidation reactions. So if I don't ask you oxidation reactions, then I feel like I'm neglecting, I'm neglecting you. Okay. Oh, take a picture. These ones, okay. Copy. Draw the product of the reaction when a secondary alcohol with chromium trioxide and sulfuric acid, which also creates chromic acid, reacts with the secondary alcohol. So again, if you see chromium and acid, you should think chromic acid oxidation. And if it's a secondary alcohol instead of a primary alcohol, then we create a ketone. Okay. And this is a draw the product, react one, yeah. The last two were draw the product. Multiple choice. Choose the reagent that will transform a primary alcohol into an aldehyde. So chromic acid turns a primary alcohol into an aldehyde. And there are many, many reagents that will turn a primary alcohol into or chromic acid turns it into a carboxylic acid. But there are many reagents that will turn a primary alcohol into an aldehyde instead of an acid. into an aldehyde instead of an acid. And so we need to know what those reagents are so that you can pick the correct one when you are looking at that multiple choice question. I feel like I'm going too far. Under the conditions.
So for the primary alcohol, alcohol, um, we get a carboxylic product?
No. You only make a carboxylic acid if you have a chromic acid reagent, such as H2CO4, sodium dichromate and sulfuric acid, or chromium(III) oxide in sulfuric acid. So you have to have um, a chromic acid type reagent, chromium and acid, or chromic acid in order to get a carboxylic acid from a primary alcohol. I think that's on... Then next slide. Yes. So oxidation of primary alcohols with chromium and acid gives a carboxylic acid. If you want to stop at the aldehyde, you need one of the following reagents: PCC in anhydrous solvent, CH2Cl2. That's one of the options. There are actually many, many more ways to create an aldehyde than there are to create a carboxylic acid. So we can do, uh, PCC and CH2Cl2. We can do sodium hypochlorite in acetic acid or hypochloric acid of any form. Because, uh... NaCl in acetic acid simply produces HOCO. Then there is the sworn oxidation reagents that create an aldehyde from a primary alcohol. So it's actually, this question is gonna require you to have a pretty good memory because you're given so many different, you're given four multiple choice options, but you have to recognize only one of them will be correct, and it could be any one of these options, right? And I think that's it. Yep, that's it. Okay, fun. So only chromic acid will produce, turn a primary alcohol into a carboxylic acid. But any of these three reagents can turn a primary alcohol into an aldehyde. Which is why it's such a favored question to ask. You have to ask both. Chromic acid plus a primary alcohol, and you have to ask about primary alcohol plus um, one of these reagents, so that we know that you remember the difference between using chromic acid and using something else. Alright, then, um... After that multiple choice question, we have another "draw the product." So you're given a secondary alcohol plus a hypochloric acid, HOCO, which is the same thing as using sodium hypochlorate in acetic acid. And you are supposed to know that if you oxidize a secondary alcohol, you are going to create a ketone. Ketone. So all of the oxidation reagents um, will generate the same product if it's a secondary alcohol. Chromic acid, um, PCC, hypochloric acid, and sworn oxidation will all turn a secondary alcohol into a ketone. Um, there will only be a difference between when there's a primary alcohol. Oh, the last two. Good, 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 good. Why is it so tiny?
Maybe because the page is sized differently, but it kept the same font size.
I think it put the two phrases in different text boxes.
Oh!
Yes. Yes. Kind of strange, but at this point, do I really care? Not that much. Okay. We just need the questions to be on the page. Anyways. Which halogen is the least reactive in nucleophilic substitution? Oh. This is just a general question, right?
Is it fluorine?
Yes.
Yay!
What is the order of reactivity for halogens in nucleophilic substitution?
Well...
Is iodine the most reactive?
You become a better leaving group as you go down the group. Yes? Okay. So fluorine is the least reactive. And then, we can order the reactivity of alkylhalides that, um, become a better leaving group as you move down the group. Which species is the more stable carbocation um, given a list of condensed formula? Woo! I don't even have to tell you the charge when it's a condensed formula. It can be like, um...
The more substituted is the most stable, right?
Mm-hmm. So if I gave you this condensed formula, where is the positive charge? Yes, correct. And then, it, what is the substitution of that carbon?
Sp2?
Tertiary, primary, secondary. It's tertiary.
Tertiary.
So if you're given, um, a list of carbocation species where they're written in condensed formula, be able to order them from, or to either order them from, uh, most stable to least stable, or to, um, pick the most stable or the least stable carbocation in the list. And that is the last question on the study guide. We are done.
So I guess I'm just drawing and blank, but how did we know that positive charge was on that specific carbon, the tertiary?
Because it doesn't have enough bonds.
Okay, and this isn't including the hydrogen bond? Or is it?
I mean, it doesn't have a hydrogen bonded to it.
Cause it has two.
Methyl, carbon, then it's bonded to a carbon that's bonded to two hydrogens.
Oh, right. Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah. So you can always recognize which carbon is the carbocation because it's only sp2 hybridized. And so it'll be the only carbon with three electron domains. Okay. Okay. Alright, any more questions before we go?
Well, what about the reactions for chapter nine, or the FGNs for chapter nine? Do we need to do those before we do them?
You don't have to do them, but, um... If you do them, you can use them on the test.
Okay.
With the rest of your functional group notebook for... So there's motivation to doing it, right?
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's not an open note test, except that I'm okay with you having your functional group notebook.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Where would we find the chapter nine FGNs then, if they aren't on our current list? Just look at the last one?
Yes, and we'll tell you what page numbers you can find the information of. And it's really just like a generic, you don't, you know, we did so many different reactions in chapter nine. Just pick one, because the general mechanism doesn't change. Right? For the SN1, SN2, E1 and E2, they all have a standard general mechanism, and there are a lot of different alkylhalides, or a lot of different, um... bases that could react that way. So you just have to, you know, pick one and make a note in the key points that, you know, there's a wide variety of bases that could be the nucleophile. And then, and the key points like for primary, for SN1, I would put in my key points that, you know, um, for an SN1 substitution, the alkylhalide, um, is preferred to be tertiary, and that, uh, primary alkylhalide cannot undergo SN1. And then for, uh, key points on SN2, I would mention, you know, um... A primary alkylhalide is the best for SN2, and tertiary alkylhalide cannot be SN2, that kind of thing. Right?
Okay, yeah.
The FGN is a very helpful study tool, guys. Alright, um, anything else?
The test closes Sunday at 11:59, right? Just to be sure.
I don't remember.
And, and there's two short answers, and then the rest is drawing, or a few multiple choice?
Uh, there's two short answers, there's drawing, and there's multiple choice. I can't, I don't remember the ratio of drawing to multiple choice. And I think that one of the short answers is, um... Um, I like a part B on, on another question, so it's not, no. Seriously? That's annoying. Alright. I'm gonna have to go in and edit the video before... Okay.
I missed that.
That's good. I'm glad that you missed that. I was trying to look at the, uh, the due date for the exam. And, uh, clicked the wrong thing and it opened up the gradebook. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, don't need that.
Yeah. You don't need that. Okay, there it is. Uh, it says due February 28th, yep, at 11:59, so that's Sunday.
Yay! Oh yeah, the timeframe, like how long, how long is allowed?
I think I put 90 minutes, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
And I'm not 100% that that's enough time.
Yeah, I'm not either.
So I, I, I need to look at that.
Cause there's a lot of drawing and the thought process that goes into it before the drawing takes more than two minutes.
Yeah, but I mean, come on, 100 minutes for 27 questions is like four minutes per question.
Yeah, that time goes by really fast. I don't know. It does for me.
I'm sure it does for a lot of folks. You're not the only one who feels like, "That doesn't feel like a lot of time."
Yeah.
It didn't save my time limit. So... Uh, yes, there is a time limit. Okay.
Was it unlimited before?
Yes.
Oh!
Which I did not intend for it to be, so... I guess it's a good thing nobody's taken it yet.
Should've checked that earlier. And then said nothing about now.
Alright, so I put, I put 100 minutes.
Okay, that's better.
Hopefully, it's enough. I, uh, I might go through and see how long it takes me to do it, but I'm pretty sure that I could do it in maybe 15 minutes, so...
Oh, well, yeah.
If I were gonna go by my rule of I do it and then I multiply by three and that's how much time you have, it probably wouldn't help you very much for me to do that.
Yeah, maybe multiply by four or something. Yeah, by five, that was.
All right, anything else?
That's all for me.
Thank you for coming and helping us, Dr. Millsap.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Have a good night.
Bye.
Good night.